Good evening and welcome to the Indian River Tea Party's 2012 City Council Candidate Forum. I'd like to welcome our candidates with us tonight. We have six out of the seven running for city council. We have Craig Fletcher, Brian Hetty, Jay Kramer, Nick Thomas, Kilar Turner, and Dan Stumpf. I'd also like to thank the audience here with us in the community center. Thank you for being here. And welcome to our radio listeners on WTTV. And that tells me that I would like to remind the candidates that we have an audience listening in by radio. So when you answer questions, please start by giving your name so those who are not with us will know who's responding. Also, I'd like to thank the City of Vero Beach for this fine community center and the opportunity to be here. I'd like to thank WTTV for carrying this live. Thank you all. Thank you Carl. Alright. You know, I'm the rules guy. And I'm gonna tell you the rules, but I'm gonna do that once we start the questions. So we're gonna go ahead and begin with the opening statements from each candidate. And Craig, we're gonna start with you. You have three minutes to give your opening statement. Yes, you have a mic on the table. You'll have to share. And the timekeepers down front, and they will give you the yellow caution when you have 30 seconds left and the red when you're out of time. Craig?
Good evening. I'm Craig Fletcher, currently Vice Mayor of the City of Vero Beach. My family's lived here for over a century. My father was mayor, my brother was a county commissioner, and one of the things we've always, in my family, done is public service. And one of the work, one of the most important things we've always done is what this city is going to look like. We knew what it was gonna look like years ago. We knew it was beautiful fifty years ago. And we worked really hard to keep it that way. We have a huge decision coming up, and it's going to be, of course, 500 pound grill that has the electric utilities. This is an opportunity for the City of Vero Beach. The door of opportunity, a window of opportunity has opened up to us that we are not going to see again. This window of opportunity is the sale, of course, of the power plant. We can solve many, many of the city's problems with a sale. One of the biggest things that we're going to do is we're going to have the profits from the sale go into our unfunded, underfunded retirement program. It's currently about thirty-eight, forty million dollars underfunded. We'll take that money, pay off the underfunded mandates for the retirement program, and we will have a clean sheet of paper. We'll have smaller government. We'll be able to start all over again with fiscal responsibility. The light at the end of the tunnel is not a train. The light at the end of the tunnel is a new start for the city. A brand-new window of opportunity again. We're going to have a power plant that is over a half-century old that we can get rid of. This is a chance at a lifetime that will never return. Again, this is a window of opportunity. With this power plant, electric utilities gone, we'll be able to use that property down there for a private or commercial venture that will bring money back into the main funds for the City of Vero Beach. We keep hearing about this huge offset that we're going to have a shortfall. Well, it's not that big of a shortfall. It's like $2.4 million, the last number I heard. There'll be some other numbers out there that you can hear, but it's not that bad. It's only 15% of the budget. We can work that out. That's not a big deal. I'm getting the books come out here. One thing I want to close with is, we have a huge, huge opportunity to start on a clean sheet again. We cannot afford to keep this power plant. We cannot afford not to sell this power plant. One instance, I'll tell you that we're gonna crack those units open, five on number two. We're gonna crack open this coming week. This coming week, it's gonna be $3.4 million just to crack the two open. Thank you for your time. Vote for Craig Fletcher.
I'm Brian Hetty, and I did serve on city council a couple of years ago. And while I was on council, I worked to make government more efficient. I opposed moves that to allow government to fund budget shortfalls with loans or new revenue streams. I supported cutting wasteful spending. I supported government programs which provide for essential services. My opponent says that the sale of the electric utility will give us a clean sheet of paper, a clean slate, and we'll be able to go forward with fiscal responsibility. The only way you go forward with fiscal responsibility is that the electors, the voters, pay attention each and every single year and go out and vote for candidates that you know will act in a responsible way. Unfortunately, that doesn't happen very often. I hope that it does happen in this election. I hope that you do cast your vote for Brian Hetty. I think that if you paid attention when I was on council, you'll understand that fiscal responsibility is something I did pay attention to. I think we had a council that was fiscally responsible. I think that they would be looking at the details of the sale of the electric and not be giving away the proceeds of the sale. I think that what we need is, we need council members that are willing to look at the details. The Taxpayers Association held a candidate forum and they asked a question, which was not a yes or no question, and demanded that all candidates give a yes or no. Well, they didn't get a yes or no out of me, and they couldn't browbeat me into giving them a yes or no because it wasn't a yes or no question. The city needs people on the city council that cannot be browbeat into just giving a yes or no, but rather have council members that are willing to look into the details and to read the contracts, that understand what it is to voting yes or no on. And I am that candidate. And I think that most people that have watched me understand that I will look at the details. I will know what it is I'm voting on before I vote. And I would ask you to vote for Brian Hetty.
Hello, I'm Jay Kramer. I'm also running for city council for Vero Beach. It's rather interesting. You come up here with a speech to give, but then you look out and you see the faces of your community. And one of the things that you can't help but wonder is, why is it that we have such an issue that becomes such divisiveness, gives such divisiveness in our community? We've got such a wonderful town. We've got a great city. We've got great people that live here. And I think we can get through this very well. And I think we can find a solution that really does help us get our rates down. All of us certainly don't like paying higher rates. I don't. I don't like paying high taxes. A lot of these things, we can work through. And one of the best ways to do that is to simply just get the information out there. Let everybody know what the information is and have a referendum on it. We're done. That's all it takes. But in the meantime, there are an awful lot of things that we can do to get the rate down. I suggested getting rid of the power plant last year. That didn't stand in the way of selling that FPL. That simply just reduced our rates. That's something that I wanted. I'm sure that's something that you wanted. I suggested a lot of different ways to get our rates down that did not threaten the sale of FPL. That was important. The other things I did is I also made sure that our taxes didn't go up. I was the only one that stood up and said no to a 38% tax increase when we were gonna set the millage last year. That's pretty surprising. We also looked into the water and sewer, the regionalization idea. What would that have done? That would have simply raised your taxes another 25%, gave you a new tax, and gave you a lower quality of service. Would you have been happy with that? That would have been absolutely terrible, to open up your bill, to have the expectation of a lower bill and find a new tax set and find higher rates. That's not the way to do things around here. We need council persons that are gonna meet with people, talk with people, and work with them. We did a business improvement issue which helped our downtown. These are the kind of things that we need to do. We're hand-in-hand in bringing our community into a place that we can all love and respect. We worked hand-in-hand with neighbors to make sure that even simple things like replacing your street light hot tub, cleaning out the ditches so that water runs down freely, and even standing up to make sure that your dog park doesn't get turned into some other development for God knows what. You know, that was two instances if that happened. But in any case, moving forward, I wanna make sure that this town really does come together as a community. And we get the devices in this area. We really need to bring Vero Beach back to a wonderful town. And I gotta say to people around Vero Beach, it'll be a great day when we return back to Mayberry, when neighbors don't have these divisive issues and we can just simply talk again. So if you would, please vote Jay Kramer, November 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Kilar Turner. Two years ago, I came before you on a platform based on fiscal responsibility, selling the electric company, revising employee benefits, and reducing the size of government. We have made progress. We have a new management at City Hall with a new city manager, finance director, police chief, and HR manager. We now receive financial reports on a monthly basis. We have quarterly financial reviews, and our budgets are actually prepared budget versus actual cost instead of budget versus budget hiding things. Performance appraisals are now required for all city employees. We have eliminated the practice of banking, vacation pay, and sick pay by implementing the use-it-or-lose-it program. We've reduced the size of government by 5% without check-reducing your services. We are now on the threshold of an opportunity. After two years with perseverance, creativity, and cooperation, we have found a way to exit OUC and the FMPA contracts. With FPL's help, we now will not be tied to running the power plant for eighteen years as we require 200 OUC, nor will we be tied to escalating coal prices of the FMPA contracts for another 54 years. We have a way to move ahead and to move forward with the purchase and sales agreement. The most important thing we can do for economic development is to sell the electric utility, bring the lowest rates in the state of Florida into our community from the most efficient producer of electricity, returning $20 billion annually, twenty million annually, to this community. Let's bring our businesses back to our empty commercial centers without creating jobs, and let's preserve the value of Vero Beach real estate. The electrical transfer masked the cost of government for years. It allowed us to grow to 550 employees. It required the city taxpayers paying triple overtime to union. We had holiday pay for union employees even if they didn't work. And the banking of vacation and sick time, those big payouts. Without taxpayer oversight, the government will keep growing. It is no competitive market pressure to be efficient. It is time to create a more transparent government. Taxpayers should not be asked to pay for benefits that they're not available in the private sector. City employees should work as hard as you do for your tax dollars. The sale will allow us to address the looming pension crisis. We do not have $40 billion to meet our growing pension commitment. With the sale, we can reform our pension plan and allow us to implement a pay-as-you-go system, avoiding a financial disaster of kicking this issue further down the road. This is our moment to step up. Sell the electric, reform the pension plan, revise our employee benefits, streamline our government to get the best service for your tax dollars. Let's secure the financial future of our city. Please vote Turner.
Good evening. My name is Nick Thomas. And since win or lose, this is my last campaign talk for a while, I thought I would try something a little different. I'm always advised to keep my messages simple, and I generally believe that's best since most voters don't have the time or the interest to delve into the issues. So for those voters, let me simply say, I'm strongly against the sale of Vero Electric to Florida Power and Light. For my city of Vero Beach, this deal is a recipe for higher taxes and severely reduced services, all in the name of promised slightly lower electric rates that are a little more than a pipe dream. But for my Tea Party friends tonight, for those who do like to talk about philosophy, let's just take a minute to see how this has all gone so wrong. If I understand you correctly, you see yourselves as patriots who stand for low taxes, free enterprise, and limited government. My message to you is that the proposed FPL deal mocks all three principles. First, FPL is the farthest thing from a free enterprise. It's in fact a monopoly, the very opposite of a free enterprise. And once installed, FPL will have no reason at all to compete in the free market. FPL will be supported and nurtured by the state of Florida. Indeed, the main purpose of the Florida Public Service Commission is to use the full force of the state government to ensure that FPL is rewarded with a risk-free return of 11% on its money. All market risks, including the cost of fuel and the cost of building plants, are borne by the customer. Finally, just to make sure that the proponents of the FPL deal can be as wrong as it is possible to be wrong, the immediate outshot of Vero Beach giving away its free-market, money-making, employment-generating business at FPL, a state-supported monopoly, is that our taxes will need to double to fill the budgetary void left behind. I think the best thing I have to offer as a candidate for the city council, apart from my love of this city and my intellect, is that I simply bring a fresh set of eyes to look at a deal that has become so politicized that too many cannot see it for the bad deal that it is. I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you, Toby. And my thanks to the Tea Party for sponsoring this forum. My thanks to the audience for attending, and also thank you to the listeners on station WTTV, station 1490. I am Dan Stumpf, and I'm running for city council because I want to sell the city electric system. It is an outdated, unregulated, and inefficient municipal monopoly. I want to replace it with an efficient system owned and operated by FPL. This is not a divisive issue for the voters, as Mr. Kramer has just defined it. Since 2009, in every election for city council candidates, the voters in Vero Beach have replaced incumbents who have voted against the sale of the system, and they've replaced those incumbents with candidates who wanted to sell our system. This election is an easy choice for you voters. You either want to sell our city electric system, or you don't. It's not complicated. If you don't want to sell, then Jay Kramer is your man. But if you want to preserve the fine quality of life with which the City of Vero Beach has been providing to you, then Dan Stumpf is your choice. He will vote to conclude the sale to FPL. I know these are blunt words, but as a candidate, I have an obligation to be blunt with you in regards to your choice. A vote for Jay Kramer is a vote to not sell the city system, but to keep and to continue to pay the higher rates. It's also a vote to continue the unreasonable cost of maintaining an inefficient municipal monopoly. A vote for Dan Stumpf guarantees the sale of the utility system to FPL and thereby preserves the city's fine parts recreation system, the city police department, and Vero's water sewer and trash collection department. Nothing will change by selling the system, except that you will pay less for your monthly electricity. My name appears on the bottom of the ballot. Obviously, I would like to be your first choice in this election since you have three votes. However, I realize that some of you will vote early on for Kilar Turner and Craig Fletcher. They deserve your vote because of the fine work that they have done for the past two years on the city council. I also understand that some of you are going to vote for Brian Hetty. If this is your decision, I would like to be your third vote. I would like to, I'd like to be your third vote if you decide to vote for Kilar Turner or Craig Fletcher. If you wanna vote for Brian Hetty, you should also vote for Dan Stumpf because I also believe in open government and transparency in our government. In any case, make one of your votes for Dan Stumpf is the correct alternative to Jay Kramer. Finally, please exercise your right to vote in this election because that is the only way to preserve democracy. And I say, thank you for your attention.
Alright, thank the candidates. And Dan, I apologize for that. I'm the rules guy. And I didn't announce the rules because of going into the questions because I didn't think the candidates would act up during these statements. But what I failed to remember was that the audience might act up. The audience has one rule: civility. You show courtesy to every candidate. You show your disapproval or approval with your vote. Is that okay? Thank you. Candidates, we're gonna move into the questions now. And there are only two rules, if you remember. You have to answer the question that is asked. If you don't, I will probably politely stand here and listen to you, but then I'm gonna ask it to you again. And if you continue to refuse to answer it, I will make such a statement. Okay? And then you have to adhere to the time requirements. Once again, you will have 90 seconds to answer each question. You'll get the yellow caution flag with 30 seconds left and the red when you're out of time. And we ask you to wrap it up quickly. Alright? Now, we're gonna move to the questions. We have four questions for you. Then we will take questions from the audience. And at this time, I'd like to remind the audience that we have cards. As they speak and answer the questions, or even now if you are ready to formulate a question, raise your hand. We'll get you a card. You write it. Then please pass it to the end of the aisle. And Carl will get it up here to me, and we'll get the audience questions in after our four. Any questions? Oh, Mark has a question. What a surprise.
No, I just wanted a card.
Alright. As we started with Craig with the opening statements, we'll now shift one this way, Brian. We're gonna rotate, so Brian, you'll get the first question to start. Craig will be last. Alright, first question. From the Indian River Tea Party Board's point of view, the results of the last three city council elections and the voter referendum have clearly indicated a strong majority of the voters are in favor of the sale of the city's power plant to FPL. If elected, do you intend to move the sale forward or oppose it? Brian, and remember, please announce your name for the audience at home.
Brian Hetty, and the sale of the city utility had been talked about for years. And when I was elected, I put the, on the table and was successful in having a motion adopted to invite FPL to the table and see whether or not there was any interest in selling the utility. So clearly, I have favored doing something that would give the rate payers relief. What I'm not in favor of is blindly agreeing to any contract that's shoved before the city council without understanding the details and what the cost of the contracts will be. I think that FPL has made an offer. If you look at the value of the offer, I think the offer's appropriate. I'm not sure that some of the terms are appropriate with respect to what we are giving up to OUC. So, yeah, I would sell to FPL, but I'm not sure that I would give gifts to OUC that the current council seems to be wanting to give.
Just as a matter of record, I did vote to, on the first letter of intent, to try to bring forward a deal for FPL. Certainly, it's been agreed almost two years, about a year and a half, and we still don't...
Jay, did you tell them, did you tell them your name?
Well, I think you just did. Well, thank you for the extra time. We did, my name is Jay Kramer, just so that I satisfy the individuals around me. And, you know, I did bring, help bring FPL to the table, and I still love that they're here. Certainly, one of the things that I did initially was to start on a partial sale. That did not inhibit a full sale that could happen later on. It just started down the road a lot sooner. Additionally, I looked at getting rid of the power plant through using a tie line. Instead of waiting five to six years to get rid of the power plant, we would've done it last year. That certainly would not have inhibited the sale of FPL. What those things would've done, they would've gotten our rates down, and we would be paying less right now, and we still possibly will be dealing with FPL. So certainly, my concern is primarily is in the rates and trying to get those down. I have no problem whatsoever with FPL putting a deal forward and having people vote on it.
Kilar Turner, I would, must definitely continue to move forward with the sale of the electric. This has been my commitment to you two years ago, and I will move forward with it if we elect it. I have no question that bringing the FPL rates to this community is the best economic solution for our community.
Nick Thomas. As a general matter, I agree with the premise of the question, which is that people have voted and indicated through the first referendum that they have positive feelings about the sale to FPL. My problem with that, and the reason that I'm pro-referendum with regard to the final sale, is that I'm convinced that there's never been a, that people have never been put with the question of, do you wanna buy FPL or sell FPL if it means raising your taxes? If it means not having your roads repaired? If it means laying off policemen? That's the referendum thing we need to have, is the discussion we need to have. And we can just do a stroll, pull them out. How many people in this room wanna fire police? How many people in this room wanna raise their taxes? If it's put to them, put to people in that way, I think we'd never ask that question. I think it's high ground, but we do.
Thank you. This is Dan Stumpf again, and I am strongly in favor of selling the city's electric utility system. I have been in favor of that for several years. For four years when I was on the board of directors of the Taxpayers Association. The association's studying the question very carefully, the pros and cons. It's been discussed over and over again. When I was president of the Taxpayers Association, I worked strongly in favor of trying to get the issue on the ballot of giving the City of Vero Beach authority to lease the land to FPL so that in the event that the city decided to sell that. I worked strongly in favor of that referendum. When the time came to vote on city council, when Mr. Kramer was on the council, he voted against that ordinance allowing for that referendum. Now he sits up here, says that I want a city referendum on the sale. Well, when the time came for the proper vote on the first referendum, he voted no. We have an outdated, we have a very inefficient electrical utility system. Everyone benefits, not just the Alcombe residents, but the city residents of Vero Beach whom we represent. We all benefit by selling this system.
Craig Fletcher, thank you. I think the public has spoken three times. They very strongly support the sale, as I do. I don't support a referendum this time since we don't have all the contracts in hand. I think it'd be foolish to have a referendum where you don't have an educated public or a council. We don't know what the final documents are gonna look like, so it'd be a poor timing. Wait until we have all the contracts in to review before you go to a referendum. I strongly support and will vote for the sale of the contract, or the sale of the power plant.
Alright, thank you. That completes question one. Jay Kramer, you'll start this round. The second question. With a GAI appraisal for the potential sale at $182.6 million and FPL's total offer now valued at $179.6 million, is this a fair price for the power system? now valued at $179.6 million, is this a fair price for the power system?
Again, Jay Kramer. Certainly, I don't, I don't think the offer is $179 million. The offer for the system is going to be verified with the number that FPL puts in front of the Public Service Commission. That is the number that they will be offering Vero Beach. Certainly, if you look at all of the numbers, you have a lot of estimations in there. You know, I could easily debunk several of them. If we have a tie line, we don't need upgrades in our transmissions. I remember last, a couple of years ago, we had a gentleman that wanted to tear down the power plant for a port scrap value. What's going to happen is, is that when the FPL goes before the PSC, the number that they put before the PSC is going to be the actual number that they buy or they're offering to Vero Beach.
Kilar Turner. Yes, I do believe that the offer that we have in front of us, the former FPL, is a fair, a valid offer. If you looked at the value of our current power contracts under Orlando Utility Commission and under the Florida Municipal Power Association, they have a negative value of $85 million. And what does that mean? Is that you, the ratepayers, are going to be paid that much more than market to stay within these contracts. This is an incredible opportunity for us to move forward and to get out of this antiquated business that we are not efficient at running. Electric utilities are an economies of scale business. The larger, the more efficient they are. Private investor-owned utilities will continue to broaden the gap between public power because of their investment in technology. This will continue to grow, and our disparity will grow. This is a great deal for the city of Vero Beach.
Nick Thomas. From my point of view, there's two ways to value a business. There is how much is this stuff worth? And the appraisal may or may not be correct, but I don't view it that way. I think the way you value a business is you figure out what the cash flow is. And we know that Vero Electric makes about $5 million a year. So the only way for us to be offered a fair price is for us to be given an amount of money that we get to hold on to that would provide us, over many years, the equivalent of $5 million a year. So what that figure is, $60,000, $70,000, something like that. But the point of all this is the pricing is semantics because we don't keep any of the money from the sales price. I mean, very little of it. It's, you know, so we're being offered, to the best of our knowledge, $10 million for our utility, and then we get to recapture 40, 30 million that's sitting in a restricted fund right now. $40 million in our pocket is not enough to replace $5 million a year.
Dan Stumpf. The question of what a fair price is for the sale of our system is one that's going to have to be studied very carefully between the GAI appraisal and what FPL has offered to us. I initially heard the figure, I think, two months ago, $170 million. Now it appears that it's up to $179.6. In any event, if my math is correct, we're talking about a differential of $3 million between appraisal and a fair price. $3 million is what the city of Vero leases and pays every year to help fund a very expensive defined pension plan. So, you know, this, to me, does not seem to be out of line. But one point that was raised by one of the speakers was the final price is going to have to be approved by the Public Utility Commission or the Public Service Commission. And that's a fine point. That brings up a good point, and another good point, why the city should sell this system because it's so outdated. Right now, there is no regulation over the rates that can be charged every month to our residents. There's no regulation. FPL, when they take control, they are going to be regulated. And that's a good point, and another point in favor of selling the system.
Craig Fletcher. I think it's a realistic price. We're going to get enough money that we'll be able to pay down, pay off and cap the underfunded benefits program. So I have no problem with this. And, you know, it's a realistic, you want to even call it fair, you want to call it realistic. It's a realistic price. There may be some revisions as we go along. That's to be expected. We're a long way from the sale, and there'll be changes. But that's a good starting number for me. I feel very comfortable with that. Thank you.
The question was, the city's experts value the utility at $182 million, and FPL has offered $179 million. Oh, Brian Hedy. Sorry, Toby. Forgot to mention my name. Anyway. Brian Hedy says, $182 million versus $178 is $178 a fair price if the value is $182? Of course, that's no brainer. Of course, it's a fair price. The question is, how you receive $179 million? If you receive $179 million in a way that's unusable to the city, then you're talking about a different story. And I think what you need to do is you need to elect council members that are willing to look at the details of how we're going to receive that money. Is the price fair? Yeah. Now let's take the money in, in a way that's fair to the taxpayers and the ratepayers in our community.
Thank you. All right. Kilar, you'll start this question. Third question. In the event of no sale, please explain the long-term cost of maintaining, upgrading, and operating our 1960s vintage power plant and the impact these costs will have on our future power bills.
A no sale would be absolutely catastrophic. I think we're already seeing businesses move out of the city of Vero Beach, or places are empty. Talking to realtors, they can't sell homes that are on Vero Beach Electric any longer. We'll continue to put pressure of devaluing our real estate. The antique power plant we have, we are required, under Orlando Utilities Commission, to run this plant for another 18 years. It is providing peak power when demand requires it. The maintenance costs, it is, I just asked, I can't even give you a good estimate of what the cost would be. But that would have to be borne by all of our ratepayers. We already have almost $50 million in debt within our electric company. And to think that you would have to go out and secure additional debt for this project.
This is Nick Thomas speaking. Two points. One, and I don't pull myself out as an expert on Big Blue and what the ramifications would certainly be. My understanding is two. One, Big Blue is there in order to be on-call should we need it in the event of peak power load. It doesn't run very much. We don't use it very much. My understanding is that if we were able to tap into another source for electric, we could buy in the open market, we would no longer need Big Blue. One of the things that I think, a lot of the demagoguery that goes on around this deal is that people who are proponents of the sale point at Big Blue and say, this is the problem. It's not really the problem. I think, by my understanding, Big Blue can go even if we say no to this deal, as we rightly should. My understanding is that we need to just find a way to tap into a source to buy the power we need for overages, and then we can slowly and carefully decommission and do away with Big Blue.
Thank you.
This is Dan Stumpf. I don't believe I need 90 seconds to answer this, but in the event of a no sale, I cannot see a way to continue to maintain this expensive system. I don't know that much about electrical engineering, but I am told by our experts, people who are familiar with our outdated plan, that it's going to cost a minimum $50 million just to replace one generator. And I can't sit before you here tonight and tell you where the city of Vero Beach is going to come up with that money. I don't see it. And this is another reason why we have to sell the system.
Craig Fletcher. The impact without the sale is going to be significant. I mentioned to you earlier that the maintenance that we're doing next week starts, I believe, just opened up number five and number two units, it's $3.4 million. That's just a crack open. That doesn't tell you what is wrong on the inside and how much more maintenance you're going to have to add for them. Mr. Stumpf is correct. About 10 years ago, when I was in the council, we went through a study to repower the turbine we had, which is an L-5,000 frame, up to an L-6,000 frame, which was designed to run intermittently. And it was somewhere in the area of $50 million, which you'd have to close down, unbondage it for, which means more debt, not more service. The other, if you don't, if we don't go through with the sale, that means we also do not pay off the underfunded benefits for the program that's $40 million, $35, $40 million in arrears, that we're paying $3.2 million a year trying to stay even, can't even catch up with that kind of money. So it's going to be a significant loss to the city, a significant cost to the city not to sell it. We cannot afford not to sell this power plant.
I don't, Brian Hedy, I don't think that there's going to be a no sale. I think that the city council has already taken enough steps and signed enough documents that the sale is assured. But I tell you, it's unfortunate when you hear candidates for city council kind of beat up on the city and spread this word that businesses are moving out and people can't sell their houses. And this is all the problems that are caused by the power plant. Well, I think that the real estate bust happened across the country, not just here in Vero Beach. I think that there are houses that are selling, and if you look at some of the houses that are going up in Vero Beach, we have very few lots left, but that did stop someone from putting up a pretty big house over here on the beach. There are businesses that are moving into our city. There's a lot of wonderful things going on in our city, and it seems that of the current city council members, it's only Jay that puts out the good things that are happening in our city. We hear about underfunded pension plans. Well, the underfunded pension plans, that happens each and every single year when council members don't pay for the benefits earned in the year that they are earned. And we need to start doing that. We need to pay for benefits in the year that they're earned. No sale, there is a sale. It's going to happen.
Jay Kramer. Quite frankly, I remember having a conversation with Jan Asgur and Ken DeSonic about this very question. And quite frankly, they just turned to me and says, Jay, you know, we don't need that power plant. You know, OUC doesn't need a power plant. They're in the business of selling power. They're not in the business of running somebody else's power plant. You know, if the sale doesn't go through, you know, you get rid of the power plant, you use a tie line, you take $10 million bucks off your books, have a great meeting with Demos Esman from ENCO, you outsource your TND, and you basically, you turn your system into something like Winter Park has got up north of us. And Winter Park does beat FPL on the commercial side. They're very efficient on the system, and we have lots of options here. You know, I'm not saying no to an FPL sale, but I am covering all my bases to make sure that no matter what, we're going to get our rates down. I want to make sure that our people are not stuck with council people who just have a linear thought, one-way, one-way only. And when you have a blockage, they don't know what to do. But are there other options out there? I've talked with the city manager, I've talked with our engineers. Yeah, we can get rid of the power plant. It's not a problem. We can outsource, and we can get our rates down even if the sale doesn't happen.
All right. Thank the candidates. Now we're on to question four. Nick, you get this one first. The population of the city of Sebastian is roughly 22,000. Population of the city of Vero Beach is roughly 15,000, approximately 30% less than Sebastian. Yet, Vero's staffing levels are three times those of Sebastian. If you exclude the electric utility, the staffing levels are still more than double. What will you bring to, what will you do to bring Vero closer to parity in the size of our government?
So you won't be a bad man, Sebastian? I don't want to baden out Sebastian. It's Sebastian, Vero, we're apples and oranges. I think our friend Mark Schuman made a much better comparison than you did last week when he compares to Stewart. I mean, this is one of the fundamental things we're talking about here is, you know, you can be a tea partyer. You can, you can say cut, 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 cut. You can look at another town that does less, spends less, and aspire to be them. But when push comes to shove, we're not Sebastian. We're a lot more like Stewart. We're a resort town in beautiful central Florida on the ocean. It costs X amount to be that. Mercedes costs more than VWs, whatever. I don't know cars very well. But the point is, is that, I think that's just a silly question. I'm sure there's some place in the Ozarks that makes Sebastian look like Palm Beach. But the fact is, that's not what I'm aspiring to. Thanks.
I've listened to the opponents of the sale of the electric system, time to time during the course of this campaign, and I have not heard a good reason or an explanation from any of them as to why we have to keep the number of employees on the city staff that we now have. And I think it's, I think it goes without saying that it's going to be a necessary conclusion that when the power plant is, when our system is sold, that there's going to have to be some staff reductions. And it shouldn't come as a surprise. This happens a lot in American life. There are Fortune 500 companies that, for one reason or another, have to let some of their employees go. And we have to have a balanced budget in Vero Beach, like the state of Florida. We can't cut money. We can't go into debt like the federal government. And if our budget, if our financial resources do not allow for the maintenance of a certain, or maintaining a certain level of employees, it's just a matter of simple arithmetic that we have to have a reduction in employees. I just don't understand why, I think we're up now to 400 employees. And even if FPL did as they will, if they take over our system, they will assume a lot of our employees, we're still going to have. I think a large number of employees, I think it's going to be hard to finance.
Dan, did you start by saying your name?
Sorry, this is Dan Stumpf.
Okay, just checking on this. Brad?
Craig Fletcher. I would also reject the comparison of Sebastian with Vero Beach. Vero Beach is a much more desirable place to live. The culture here is much better. The citizens here demand more services than they do in Sebastian. But on the other hand, I do see in the future there being some reduction in staff. It's, the disparity between the two is well defined and way, way over what we really need. We'll have some cuts along with some, there'll be a blend of issues we're going to take. Finance committee has come up with, I think, three pages of issues we can address to lower costs, lower overhead in general. And one of them is, of course, the reduction of staff. It's not off the table, it's definitely on the table. We're just going to have to work out what the blend will be when we do the reductions.
Brian Hedy. And I think that you can compare Vero with lots of different cities and come up with lots of different conclusions, but I think that the residents in our community make a determination as to what the services they're willing to pay for are. I think that the elected officials that you elect make decisions as to whether or not they want to run. not they want to run an efficient city government, or whether they want lots of extras. If you want to reduce the size of government, elect city council members that are willing to do that. And when I was on city council, a couple of years ago, we found a way of getting rid of the city manager and combining that job with public works. And the additional cost to the city was $500 a month. After that, there was an election, you elected three new people, and a couple of those members decided that they didn't like that, and they split that back up and added $150,000 per year plus benefits over my number. So I think that if you want to, if you want to reduce the cost, you need to elect people that are willing to reduce the cost in a meaningful way, Brian Hedy.
Jay Kramer. The question was really comparing Sebastian and Vero Beach. In order to really compare things, what you've really got to do is look at the different levels of services that are between Vero Beach and Sebastian. Sebastian does not have water and sewer department, I don't believe they have a solid waste department, nor a marina, and parks and records is not really big in Sebastian. And when you look at those, a lot of those are enterprise funds, which means those employees that work in those areas are self-sufficient. They are not on the tax dole. You don't pay for them through your taxes. So once you start pairing those employees out of the question, what happens is that you do end up with a very comparable number of employees, and you do find that a lot of cities are struggling through this economic time with staffing issues, and they are cutting back. However, to simply say that, you know, Vero Beach is quite overstapped is really, is really not fair unless you start to strip out all of those self-funding employees.
Yes, Kilar Turner. And once again, I have gone through the benchmarking exercise that we did comparing seven other cities and looking at the staffing level. And it is quite clear that the middle management within our city hall is overstapped. Elimination of middle management will not affect your services. There'll be the same number of people picking up garbage, same number of people mowing lawns, but the middle management level is inflated. City employees should have to work as hard as you do for our tax dollars. We pay them for 40 hours a week. We have a three-man sign department. How many signs would we need in Vero Beach to keep someone busy for 40 hours a week? We have a three-man mapping department to map 11 square miles. We have a full fleet maintenance program, which could be outsourced. There are many things that could, changes that could be done that will not affect your level of service and still give us a more efficient city government. We could cross, do more cost training, succession planning within our group, and I think we need to continue to seek these efficiencies.